I'd like to call to order the City of Belton Planning Commission session for October 7. Could we have the roll call, please?
Chairman McPherson.
Here.
Mayor Larkin.
Here.
Councilmember Pryon. Commissioner Christiansen. Commissioner Crete.
Here.
Commissioner McDonough.
Here.
Commissioner Ruggles.
Here.
Commissioner Shutt.
Here.
Commissioner Walton.
Thank you. First item we have this morning, or this evening, would be the review and approval of our minutes from the September 16 meeting. Those have been printed and distributed. Are there any corrections, modifications, or additions need to be made? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Motion, a second. All those in favor of approval of the September 16, 2025 minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any aye? Any opposed? All right, we will move on then to new business. We have a presentation of Safe Streets for All SS4A Plan. And Ryan?
Yep. So, my name is Ryan Haupt. I'm the city engineer at the City of Belton. And then this presentation's going to be on the Belton Transportation Safety Action Plan. This plan was put together as part of the Federal Highway Administration's Safe Streets for All program. And basically, the purpose of this plan is it allows the city to apply for and receive grant funds for streets and areas identified within the plan. So to begin... So to begin, I'll start by talking about the High Injury and High Risk Network. And then I will talk about the community engagement that was performed, because that was a very large part of the development of the plan. And then I'll talk about the recommendations of the plan, followed by the next steps. And ultimately, then we'll talk about the... I'll let you guys ask any questions you might have on this. So the High Injury Network consists of approximately 7% of Belton's roadways. Most of these roadways are state-owned and maintained, and since this is a local plan, we wanted to make sure it involved local roadways. So we also looked at something called the High Risk Network. And the High Risk Network basically looks at roadways that people might consider or feel are unsafe, just based on different characteristics. And these might be things such as like no sidewalks, no curbs, narrow streets, that sort of thing. And so combined, the High Risk Network and High Injury Network consist of about a third of the city's roadways. So, community engagement. So we did an online survey for a couple months. We received a ton of feedback, and as you can see, it took place all over the city. And there was a lot of overlap between our online feedback and our in-person feedback. Lots of people were concerned about pedestrian safety, intersection safety, and school zone safety. And as you'll see moving forward with our in-person, there's definitely a lot of overlap there, which is great, which is what you want for developing a plan, a lot of consensus. So we had three pop-up events. One was at Cary Nation Days, another was at the Senior Center, and then the last one was at the High Blue Wellness Center. And again, you can kind of see the themes. There's a lot of overlap, people talking about intersections and pedestrian infrastructure. And then we also had a set of task force meetings. And the task force consisted of a bunch of different folks, a couple council members, Commissioner McPherson, just, you know, business owners and all sorts of other people were involved with the development of this. And so the first meeting we had basically introduced everybody to what this project and plan is. And we talked about some general concerns that folks have throughout the city, and talked about some of our other community engagement. And then the second meeting we had talked about how we were progressing with the plan and things that they wanted to see in the plan. And then the last meeting, we went through our final plan and made any final tweaks that the task force felt was needed. So, how did it influence the plan? Well, it helped us set our goals and also basically helped us pick recommendations and kind of move forward with developing the plan and keep it grounded in local needs, because this is a local plan after all. So what are some of these recommendations? So we have a list of different priorities, and they're numbered, but they don't have to be done in number order. The plan was left to be very general, so that way if a funding opportunity comes available for something lower down on the list, we can address it at that time. And so the first priority was basically improving safety in the subdivisions up in the northeast area, Old Town, and then West Belton. And, you know, we received a lot of feedback from those areas, so we felt that that was, you know, applicable, and we wanted to make sure that that was included front and center in the plan. Priority 2A covers a pretty wide network throughout the city, everything within a quarter mile of schools and parks. So, again, because all these streets are covered in here, if there's a safety concern that arises anywhere in there, we can develop a project and apply for federal funding if that opportunity comes available. Priority 2B is the High Risk Network. And there's not much to add compared to what I said earlier about the High Risk Network, but it's part of the requirements when you develop one of these plans. And you can see there's a lot of overlap between some of these priorities. So, a lot of justification for working on these improvements when applying for these grants. 2C priority, that covers the sidewalk gaps, which is a very big concern that folks have throughout the city. We received a ton of community feedback on that, and so we wanted to make sure that that was also included in the plan. The red highlighted streets are streets that don't have sidewalk on either side. The orange highlighted streets have sidewalk on one side but not the other. And then the green highlighted streets have sidewalk on both sides. Priority 3 is the High Injury Network. And again, I kind of covered that one earlier, but a lot of those streets are federally or state-owned and maintained, so they require collaboration with other agencies. But again, it's important to keep these included in the plan as well, to make sure we're addressing all the safety issues within the city. And moving forward, after it receives approval from Planning Commission, it will go to the City Council for approval and adoption, and then we can begin looking at future funding opportunities in future years. And with that, I'll take any questions you guys might have.
All right. Are there any questions for staff at this point? I would just... I think you touched on it, but just to make it clear, this plan is something that does need to be in place, either this or a plan, does need to be in place in the future to help us get grants. Is that correct?
Yeah, correct. So the way the plan works is we have to create a plan first, have the plan adopted, and then in future years, we can basically say, hey, we've got this plan, see these areas are covered in the plan, and we need to address a project here within the plan. So that's how that'll work.
So it is not just so we've got a document, but it's... there's a real purpose to where this will take us. Any other comments, questions? We will open up a public hearing at this point and ask if there is anyone here that has any comments, anyone in the audience that has any comments or questions that you would like to bring, either in favor or in opposition? Ask one more time, anyone in the audience with any pro or con? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing then and open it up again to the commission. Any...anything further? It was interesting sitting on there, just kind of additional insight, a couple of things that came as being a part of that. But basically, all of our main roads are highway roads. Yeah, we've got a lot of miles of other roads, secondary roads, that belong to the city, but 49, 58 Y and D, so we're basically boxed in by state highways. And so...and, you know, that was, I think, one of the things that became eye-opening in the first session. And then there were several other things that in the full report, you'll see that there are some additional suggestions, things that can be done. I know the school district already has implemented some of these, and/or has been over the last several years, and, you know, encourage that to continue. And so I think it's a great...I think it's a great plan. Would entertain a motion to move this forward to the City Council.
Make a motion to approve the Safe Streets for All as presented.
All right, thank you. You have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. One last call for any additional comments. Seeing none, could we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Larkin.
Yes.
Commissioner Shutt.
Aye.
Commissioner McDonough.
Aye.
Commissioner Walton.
Aye.
Chairman McPherson.
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles.
Aye.
Commissioner Crete.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving to our next item B is the presentation of PROJ 25-004, Request from Community Development Staff for the Vacation of Right-of-Way at the Northeast and Northwest Corners of 173rd Street and Cunningham Parkway. And we'll hear from our director, Mr. Wright.
Yep, thank you, Chair. Before this evening is a request for the vacation of excess right-of-way at both the Northeast and Northwest Corners of the realigned intersection at the corner of East 173rd Street and Cunningham Parkway. The existing right-of-way for this right-of-way was dedicated by the Dean Co. Development Park Platte that was platted in 1986, and this part of Cunningham Parkway was originally constructed in 2002. In 2023, plans for the East 173rd Street Extension and the realignment of the intersection with Cunningham Parkway were finalized, and improvements were completed last fall. Due to this realignment, the street and intersection was shifted further south to make East 173rd Street the primary through street for that area. Staff sent out the request to utility contacts, and all the utilities that responded do have utilities within the right-of-way that's requested to be vacated. Based on that, staff is only requesting to vacate the right-of-way and return it to private ownership. However, the underlying utilities and it will remain for the benefit of the existing and future utilities in that area. With that, certain site improvements, such as parking and landscaping, may be installed within the easement. However, no buildings can be constructed in those easements. However, based on the location of the easement up against the right-of-way and at the intersection, a building is unlikely to be built within that area based on setbacks and site design. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the requested right-of-way vacation with the retention of a utilitiesman for the benefit of existing and future utilities. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for the director at this point? We will have a public hearing on this as well, so we will call that to order and ask if there's anyone here that would like to speak either in favor or in opposition to this request for vacation, to come to the podium and speak. And if you would, give us your name and address for the records, please.
My name is John Ryan. My street address is 3000 East, 195th Street, Belton, Missouri. It's not loud enough yet.
We want to make sure that those watching at home or online are able to hear everything as well.
This diagram does not show you the area adequately, I think, for you to understand what is being done. This makes it difficult, I think, to get all this to you, but I can pass this around so that you see the tracks that are being affected. My wife and I...my wife and I own Track 2. And Cunningham Parkway is, you can see on that small diagram, touches on Track 1, Track 2, and so on. What they've done, when they changed this road design, is they took about 80%, 85% of my and my wife's track access to Cunningham Parkway. They took and did some land swap with Dean Farms, which was on the south side of Cunningham Parkway, took some of their land and put the road through there, but then gave Dean Farms a nub of property, butting up against my property, so that I have no access to Cunningham Parkway where they've done this. Now, the right-of-way should, as I understand, and I've not been approached by the city to do this, to even talk about it, despite in 2024, some concerns I expressed. The right-of-way, as I understand the law, should be, if you're going to do it...and first of all, my wife and I do not consent to this abandonment of the right-of-way. But if you're going to do it, the right-of-way, as I understand, it's supposed to be a portion to the two property owners, Dean Farms, my wife and I. That's not been presented by the city. I don't know what they're going to do. They've just said to you, let's abandon the road, the right-of-way, and yes, let the chips fall where they may. Under the Missouri statute 71.40, the statute says, the part banning parties, they need to get the consent of the adjacent property owners. My wife and I do not consent. Section 71.250 does talk about vacating the land, the land vacated, being split among the different...the two property...this case, two property owners. I think you have a city ordinance, excuse me, you have another statute that says the same thing. That one is section 88.673. Now, that one's interesting, and I present it to you for your consideration, because it goes on to say that the city in doing that needs to provide all damages to the...that it can be ascertained in, as you would during condemnation. I'm sorry, I've got this...I've tried to...here it is. Direct your attention to about halfway through this. It goes on to say that if the board wants to vacate streets, they have the power to do so, but all damages, provided, fourth line down, provided all damages sustained by the citizens of the city or owners of the property therein shall be ascertained and prescribed in that portion of chapter related to condemnation, which is chapter 88. That has not been done. Mayor Larkin and I have visited about this, both on-site as well as phone conversations and at my office, and I think he will readily acknowledge that what has been done by the creation of this road has clearly caused damages to our property. I believe the city has an obligation under the statutes and ordinances to look into this and negotiate or reach some agreement with my wife and I, as owners of the adjacent land, to address the damages that are being caused us. This is not to say that you don't have the legal authority to do this, which you've already built the road, despite even not talking to me about it, not that you had to. But I do think that you have to follow the law and require the city to enter into negotiations or file a lawsuit or something to compensate my wife and I for the damages you've created. When I say damages that you've created, you can see on Track 2 that I had...I don't know what the measurement is, maybe 800 feet of access to Cunningham Parkway. This particular diagram and the abandonment that's doing, plus the giving of this land, causing land to be adjoined to my South Blanby by some negotiations that they did with the Dean Farms, eliminates about 80% of Track 2's access to Cunningham Parkway. I don't know that the city will even give me a permission, or someone else that develops this land, permission to access Cunningham Parkway, whether or not we'll even have enough space to do so for the driveways. And so, the gentleman that spoke on behalf of the city indicated that no building can be constructed on the right-of-way that's been abandoned. Thank you very much for doing one more thing to eliminate my use of this property. That has never been told to me until yesterday or tonight, so I think that's one more issue of why we object to this and why some action needs to be taken to correct the mistakes. I don't know if this would help any, but here's at least a color presentation of what my Track 2 looks like and what has been abandoned. I think the city probably has better pictures to do that, but they've essentially taken the land across the street from the Deans, put the drive...put a street through there for them, eliminated the street that's been in front of me for nine and a half years and blocked off 80% of my access to Cunningham Parkway. I wasn't privy to the land swap that was done. The city officials have told me about a land swap was done. When I asked for some more clarification about my access to this property, I exchanged emails with the city, a number of them. But the one I think I'm going to draw your attention to... Halfway down the page, you'll see from Mike Eckey, who I believe was an assistant city manager, may still be, that may be him. I don't know if it is, but he understood the question I had, and he goes on to say, "We're going to create an intersection at 173rd where you can turn left or right," et cetera. "The current road segment on the southeast side of your property will be removed, but will remain public right-of-way for access to your property, should you develop from either Cunningham or 173rd." I didn't what happened, and folks, once again, I think that demonstrates the city's disregard of the property value and rights of Track 2. So with that, I request that this abandonment not take place unless and until the city enters into statutory requirements of condemnation or somehow resolve this dispute. Thank you.
Thank you.
Answer any questions you have.
Director, would you care to respond?
Yeah, so I don't have all the information for some of those items, because these were negotiations that took place between the Public Works Director and the city attorney. And so I would recommend we continue the public hearing to be able to get some of that additional information. In terms of the what our code states, in terms of the vacation, it does not specifically state in the code that we have to have consent from adjacent property owners, but we do have to provide them with notice of our request to vacate, which we have done. So in terms of the application process, we have formally done that. But I do understand the concerns of the access, and we do need to figure out exactly how that right-of-way will be split. Typically, it is a 50-50 split. However, I believe that in the process of obtaining the additional right-of-way from the adjacent property owner, there were some other agreements that were made as part of how that would be handled. And so those are things that would need to be reviewed and brought back forward with that additional information to the Planning Commission.
Okay. So we would need a recommendation at this point to continue our public hearing?
Unless there's any additional questions or anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak, I would say we go ahead and can continue the public hearing tonight with whoever is still here, and then once any additional testimony or questions are needed, we then can have that discussion and then continue it to a...I don't think we'll have the answers by the 21st, so I think we just continue it until we do a date certain, or we won't have a date certain tonight. So we'll just continue it and renotice it for a later date.
Okay. Does that sound clear? That we will go ahead and take any, if anyone else is here this evening wants to speak, but we'll have city staff get some of these answers and some actual clarification on some of your concerns before we make any action on it?
It would be nice to have the city start dealing with me instead of ignoring me.
All right. I appreciate you...
And that's not anything but you guys, but...
I appreciate you coming to us and bringing the information. And, you know, I think that this is going to be our best...our best plan forward is to get some of those answers before we make our decision, so that we can make an intelligent decision on that as well.
Certainly.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you for being here. Is there anyone else that would like to speak either in favor or in opposition for our public hearing this evening? Ask one more time, anyone with additional comments?
Yeah, let me have it. I'll make sure you get it back.
All right. So we will close this public hearing, and we will need a motion to continue this.
Be a motion to postpone?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to postpone Project 25-004 pending updated information. updated information brought back to us at a later date to be determined.
Thank you.
And thank you for a second. Any questions from commission members? All those in favor of continuing, do we need a roll call on this or...
Just a voice vote?
Voice vote. That's what I was getting ready to do, but wanted to make sure I did it right. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So that will be coming back to us with additional information. Thank you.
Yes.
Yes. Definitely. All right. We will move on to item C, the presentation of UDCT twenty-five dash zero-zero-four, request from community development staff for unified development code text amendments to section forty dash one, I, land use tables and land use definitions, addition of section forty dash three, thirty-one, special use standards, short-term rentals, and appendix A, schedule of fees and charges to accommodate short-term rentals in limited geographic locations subject to special use standards and permit. And we'll have the director present this as well.
Yep. Before this evening is a UDC tax amendment to accommodate short-term rentals in limited geographic locations subject to special use standards and special use permit. Discussions regarding short-term rentals have been ongoing since June 2023, when the subject was first discussed with the city council as a work session topic. The timeline and the feedback received for those discussions is included in the staff report. And then overall, the proposed short-term rental standards are intended to protect predominantly residential neighborhoods, which was the primary concern that was expressed by city council. In order to achieve this, staff is recommending that short-term rentals be limited to the Old Town Belton area and residential properties with three acres or more of land. As an additional level of review and opportunity for public comment, all requests are required to go through the special use permit process, which includes notification to all property owners within one hundred and eighty-five feet of the property and a public hearing be held. And this gives the Planning Commission the opportunity to weigh in on the locations of short-term rentals, and it gives the city council the final decision on the approval of the request. A short-term rental would include any residential dwelling unit that is rented for less than thirty-one days, which is currently prohibited in the city. The tax amendments include adding subsection thirty-one to the special use standards in section forty dash three, and subsections A through L include the standards that are required to be met for all rentals. I'll provide a summary of each of those subsections, and I'll scroll through those on the screen. Subsection A defines the allowed locations of short-term rentals, which are limited to Old Town Belton, which is defined and drawn into the code. This is essentially the Old Town Belton redevelopment area that has the three fifty-three tax abatement program as well. And then any parcels that are greater than three acres in size, which are generally located in the more rural areas in the city limits, primarily in the northeast part of the city along One Hundred Fifty-Fifth and Kentucky, and then some additional properties along Cambridge and Prospect. Short-term rentals are only allowed in single-family, two-family, and upper-floor dwelling units of mixed-use buildings, as well as accessory dwelling units. They are not allowed in multifamily buildings or other non-residential buildings. In section B, that's just restating that a special use permit is required for all short-term rentals. Section C is that the property owner must be the applicant, so somebody who's renting can't sublease as a short-term rental, essentially requires the property owner to be in charge of that. And any property owner is also limited to no more than five registrations in the city limits. I don't think we'll really have a problem with that, but we put that in there just to make sure that there's not one particular property owner who is excessively utilizing short-term rentals. D states that registrations are valid for twelve months and must be renewed. That's standard for other rental registrations as well as our business licenses. E includes the registration and inspection requirements, which are similar to those that are already required for rental registration. We'll be looking at a lot of the same life safety features, make sure that the property is up to code and inhabitable. Section F is related to the development standards. This essentially is just requiring that all minimum parking standards be met, including the minimum number of paved parking spaces are provided on-site, and also a prohibition on any exterior evidence of the property being used as a short-term rental. Since the idea of a short-term rental is that it is in a residential neighborhood, it needs to keep that same context, so no additional signage or anything like that that would call attention to it in the neighborhood. Section G is related to occupancy limits. We had quite a bit of conversation about this with our tourism council, who reviewed three different drafts of this code. Ultimately, where we ended up at was something similar to what a number of other cities have, which is restricting the occupancy to a maximum of two adults per bedroom plus one additional adult per unit, up to a maximum of ten guests, which include children, and that maximum of ten guests is established regardless of the number of bedrooms. So if you only have three bedrooms, it could be, the occupancy may be smaller than that depending on the number of adults that are staying in the unit. Section H is the operational and performance standards, which include kind of the checklist for some of the life safety items, including fire extinguisher requirements, flashlights for emergency purposes, childproof electrical outlet covers. And then if they are in a mixed-use building, especially on an upper floor, where the access, ingress, egress may not be clear in the event of emergency, they need to have basically a map for emergency route access. Section I is for the additional inspection requirements. So this is if we receive a complaint or a concern from somebody who has stated a short-term rental, that there are things that aren't up to code. We will notify the property owner and the host to be able to get us into the unit for ten, within ten days to have that inspection. And then section J is related to the denial and revocation process, and this is really nuisance-based, so any short-term rental that has more than three code violations within a twelve-month period is subject to denial of a renewal, or depending on where we're at in the process, if it's early on in that twelve-month period, the revocation process. And to go through that process, we would essentially go back through, if, should they decide to appeal that, it would go back through the special use permit process and go through the public hearing, and ultimately, council would make that determination, whether or not they should be allowed to continue operation. Any short-term rental that is denied or revoked is ineligible to renew or essentially request a new short-term rental for that same property or any additional properties in the city for the next two-year period. If they have other short-term rentals in the city that are in good standing, those are allowed to continue to operate and be renewed as long as they're in good standing. Section K is related to our hotel motel license tax collection that is required for the short-term rental. Based on the way that the ordinance was written, it would cover a short-term rental, so there is an additional revenue source for those. And then section L is related to illegal operation. This essentially states that the code enforcement process would be utilized for any short-term rentals that are illegally operating in the city. This is also something that we already do address in the city, so short-term rentals currently are prohibited in the code, and we have used the code enforcement process before to get those shut down. We've done at least two of those over the last couple of years, and there are currently, we checked today, there are currently only two posted short-term rentals in Belton on Airbnb, and there are none on VRBO. Of the two posted, one does clearly have an address associated with it based on identifiable information in the listing, so that's one that we pursue, we will be pursuing a violation for. The other posting does not have enough detail for us to be able to exactly pinpoint where that location is, so we rely on neighbors or other residents who are aware of that to be able to call that out if we are to pursue a violation on that one. In addition to the special use standards, land use table on the screen is proposed to be amended, which currently, short-term rentals are prohibited in all zoning districts, but those would be stricken and added in the agricultural zoning district and all residential zoning districts, as well as the C-one, C-two, C-three zoning districts. That just accommodates the upper-level short-term rentals in a mixed-use building. And then the appendix A would also be amended to add the registration fees, which is seventy dollars proposed for the annual registration fee and a fifty-dollar inspection fee. And the purpose for that, that matches, essentially matches what our business license registration and inspection fee is as well. In addition to those fees, there's a one hundred and fifty-dollar special use permit fee that would be required for the initial startup of a short-term rental. So all in all, it's an upfront cost of two hundred and seventy dollars to start a short-term rental, and then renewals would just be subject to that, the two fees here, so a hundred and twenty dollars for the renewals. These standards have gone through several rounds of edits to bring forward a set of standards based on the direction that we've received. While we understand that this is a controversial land use with strong feelings on both sides, those that want to see more options for short-term rentals and those that don't want them allowed at all in the city, we do believe that this is the best compromise to balance both of those interests. Staff envision that this is a set of standards that can help determine how well short-term rentals will perform and be received in the city and could be revisited after a year or so to see what changes could be considered going forward. And with that, staff recommends approval of UDC tax amendments as presented, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions at this point for the director from the commission? We will have a public hearing, so you have an opportunity again if you think of any other additional questions. And we will call public hearing into session for consideration of UDCT twenty-five dash zero-zero-four. Is there anyone here that would like to speak either in favor or in opposition to the presentation as outlined by our director? Anyone to speak in favor or in opposition? Seeing none, we will close the public session, public hearing, and open it up for any additional questions. Just a clarification that I have, the inspections are done at the time of permitting. Is that correct?
Correct. So the process would be that if somebody applies for a special use permit, they would also apply for the registration. We would try to conduct those inspections potentially while the special use permit is in the process. However, we'll likely be in situations where there are people who don't even want to acquire a house or anything like that until a special use permit has been approved. So essentially, the special use permit may be approved if we go in there after they submit their registration and inspected, and there's a bunch of changes, we're just going to be holding the registration approval until they have passed those inspections. So it's possible there could be some special use permits that get approved, and the registration actually never goes forward on those. And with those, we would put a time restriction on, you know, if you don't, if your registration's not approved within a certain period of time, it's automatically revoked or denied.
And would that be subject to then, since there is a twelve-month timeframe on the registration, is that a twelve-month, do they have to do a new inspection each year
Correct.
At that time?
Yeah, so the twelve-month, the registration date starts based on when it's issued, and so it's twelve months after the date that it's issued. That's when they would legally be able to list and start accepting guests for stays. And then they have to renew generally within forty-five days of that expiration. We will re-inspect it annually, so once they've submitted the registration renewal, we'll set up an inspection and inspect it and make sure that it passes those inspections before we renew it again.
Good. Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments?
I was going to say, I for one am an Airbnb user, so I like the idea of short-term rentals. Where I'm having problems is that we're limiting it to Old Town and three-acre properties. There are a lot of people in town who are looking at what's coming our way in the next six months, eight months, and they would love to be able to do something like this. So you're either going to be asking for people to sign up for that one-time event and illegally operate, and we lose out on tax monies, or, you know, I understand why people don't want it in the residential. I can't say I would be a big fan of it next door to me, but I also know how we treat Airbnbs, and I would like that to either be open to the entire city or not at all.
So I just had a couple of questions. One, when the inspection, I know you went through the letters, is that, like, is there going to be an easier document for the inspections? Like, is it going to be what you went through on that, like occupancy?
Yes. Yeah, we will utilize essentially the same process and document that we use for our current rentals for residential. Those are the same things that we would be looking for here.
Right. And I would second what you were saying is that obviously there's a big event coming. With that being said, if there is an issue, what exactly does that process look like? Do they, are they able to maintain their stay? Or, I mean, how is that a different, totally different problem? I'm just thinking if someone next to me is getting rowdy because their team's winning, I want to make sure.
Yeah, so a couple of things on that. So we did, we did have a draft at one time that had essentially more open opportunities for this, essentially allowing it citywide. We did present that to the city council at a work session, and there were a number of concerns that were expressed by that. So that's why we've come back with the more limited option. Ultimately, you know, the Planning Commission could make a recommendation for something different to the city council, and ultimately, the city council will make that determination. We also added the special use permit option there and made that a requirement in this case, just because it seemed like there was a lot of interest in monitoring these closely, and especially with the letting neighbors know that these were coming into their neighborhood. And then in terms of the illegal operation of those, are you talking about if they were illegally operating or just in terms of the nuisance, if they are legal? Okay. So it's three code violations. You know, the noise ordinance is enforced by the police department, but also they only issue those citations if essentially the person who is making the noise complaint is willing to testify against, and a lot of times they're not, so a lot of times the noise complaints just kind of drop off the radar. On the actual code violations, though, those are things that come through community development, and those are well documented. If it's kind of a three-strikes-and-you're-out rule, that's what some other cities have done to be able to get some of the news, if they do become a nuisance, it's a way that they've been able to get those addressed. If it is determined ultimately that it's a nuisance that was created by a tenant more so than just lack of maintenance or upkeep by the property owner, you know, that is something that ultimately it would go back through the special use permit process, and the Planning Commission and council may be able to determine that that was kind of a one-time issue that's been addressed and could make that determination that, you know, they could remain operational. And then the illegal operation, again, those are always a bit of a challenge for us. We do occasionally check the websites, especially when we do receive a complaint, but again, identifying the actual address, a lot of times you don't get the address unless you actually book a reservation, so unless there's photo evidence, it could be hard to actually track those down unless a neighbor can present the actual listing to us that proves that. So that's how we've been able to go after a couple previously, is residents nearby were able to give us the listing and provide the evidence that this is the place where this is taking place.
Okay.
And then you mentioned revisiting. What, how and what does that look like? Because I, I'm sounding really negative, but I'm overall pretty for this, especially with the World Cup coming and everything. with the World Cup coming and everything. But I just want to make sure we do our due diligence to figure out the next step. So if, I think I'd feel more comfortable if there was a date in mind of like when we visit this to see if it is successful or not.
Yeah, so the whole purpose of bringing this forward now is because we are trying to get something in place for the World Cup. And then after the World Cup has wrapped up, taking a look at it after that to see if there's any changes that are going to be made or need to be made. This is not a code amendment that is, has an expiration date. So essentially, if it's approved, it is in the code until it's modified. So this isn't a temporary fix. It's more of a starting point for us, and then we can make modifications from there. And again, the planning commission can also make any recommendations or a motion for any recommendations on changes that they'd like to see made here regarding this to the council.
I was gonna say, knowing now that we've got the special use permit to kind of help alert neighbors that this is coming, I would like to see us open it up to the whole city because of that very reason.
Oh, boy. So I'm talking last because I think it's more of the other side of the coin. So I, when we first started talking about this, I was not excited for a few reasons. After hearing the discussion here, after hearing the, it being limited and there being the special use, I mean, that has eased some of my issues. I don't like personally the fact that we're just going to make an amendment and then it's just, there it is until we make a motion or until we change it. I would feel much more comfortable if there was like a sunset or if there was like a timeframe on that. I do like looking at it if we were to go ahead and move it on to actually look at it after the World Cup thing. I don't know that it's, I mean, other than, in my opinion, other than the large events coming like that, there's not going to be a whole lot of use for them. I just can't see, I just don't see the long-term use of short-term rentals in Belton. I just...
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I completely respectfully disagree with you on that. I think people don't realize how close Belton is to everything. And the opportunity for people to make money on some of their rental properties, it's like, I get it. I personally don't have any, but if I did, I'd be very excited about this coming through, you know? I, I think you're closing off a whole chapter there when you say that because I think that's assuming people are going to look over it, and eventually I don't think they're going to. And so I think we need to be prepared for that and whatever that looks like. And I don't have the answer, but I just don't want to overlook it and then later be like, oh, boy, what have we done, kind of thing.
Right, now, I totally understand the tax revenue and, I mean, I'm not, I'm for it for that, for, in that opinion, because we have the tax revenue. We have people coming in, they're, obviously, they're going to spend money in town when they're in town, you know? So I'm always for that. I just, I don't know, I just don't, I like that it's been limited to a certain part of town. I do like that because it's more of a trial run, like, let's see how this works. But I don't like the, like I said, I don't like it just being, we're going to add this amendment and then we can modify it later. I would like there to be a timeframe on that if I had my way, but, but I totally understand what you're saying though, Jamie.
So a couple, couple of things on that. Since it's a code amendment, there's no sunset on code amendments. That's the way that the code works, but we are committed to monitoring them and revisiting it after the World Cup, and that's been something we've been consistent about with the tourism council and the city council when we've talked about this. And then in terms of the location that was selected, the two, the two areas, Old Town, Belton, was selected based on, it's already kind of a mixed-use district, so there's already residences that are kind of coexisting with commercial businesses and more transient population. Also, it's generally where a lot of local and regional events are held on Main Street. And so, you know, our thought process there, where people who are coming into town for festivals, vendors who are coming into town, it's an easy walk or bike to those events. So that was the primary purpose of locating it there. And then the large three-acre lots, those are generally because you're not near another house. If somebody's staying there, the neighbor's probably not going to know or really have an issue or interest in that. And so those are kind of the reasons that we started at those locations. And then in terms of the sheer number of short-term rentals, it's kind of hard to say what the number would be. I don't think, I think for the World Cup, we may see an increase, but I would imagine that, you know, tourism could drop off. And those that may temporarily use a rental house or a rental property for short-term rental may end up selling it or just starting to rent it out as more of a standard residential rental unit. And that would be, you know, a separate process that they would go through to register that.
So speaking about that, if it is a short-term rental and they switch it to just a normal rental, how, so since they've already paid to do the short-term rental, is it a whole, are they paying again for the rental? I mean, is that just looked on a case-by-case basis?
So it's kind of a case-by-case basis. Essentially, if they're, if they know that they're not going to be listing it anymore as a short-term rental, they would need to essentially close out that license and then apply for it as a resident, a regular residential rental. So, you know, if they're, if it's something where they're renting it, now, there's some, there's some flexibility in there because, you know, sometimes the short-term rentals, somebody may rent it for a week, but then you may have like a traveling nurse or a traveling contractor who may rent it for two months. I would still go ahead and treat that as a short-term rental. But if they stop listing it for a short-term stay and then they're advertising a 12-month lease, then that's when they should close it out as a short-term rental and transition it to just our regular rental registration program. And ultimately, that's a much cheaper fee too. It's only $20 versus, you know, the additional fee that they would pay for this. Plus, they don't have to collect the hotel motel tax. So that's going to be the bigger thing is you're going to be collecting the hotel motel tax as long as it's listed.
Right. Okay.
Then I have one more thing, and then I think I'm done. But I was also doing some research on this before I came. So like when the NFL draft was here, six people travel, one person went. When it comes to World Cup, 26 people come, one person goes to the game. So that is just so much foot traffic, and maybe I'm going to shoot myself in the foot here and maybe contradict a little bit. But that is a lot of people from different areas that can come to our city, experience our city, and I, I understand where you're saying about how we should expand it. I really like where it's at because if we're trying to promote Main Street and downtown, what a better way than to have 26 people that are coming to go to the World Cup and be downtown. But don't hold me to those numbers, but I didn't do a whole lot of research, but I did enough to get those numbers in my head. So I really enjoy where it's at, and I think that I'm going to struggle seeing a negative in this. Now, I guess you can report back after, maybe I will. But what a great way to bring people into our city and to see what it looks like, so.
I'll just throw in that I could argue both sides are pretty much multiple sides of all of it. We have used Airbnbs multiple times, a couple of times in San Diego, once in Omaha, once in Chicago. And they were all in residential areas. And in fact, we had one in Omaha, they were having thunderstorms, and the person that owned the Airbnb, her house was right next door, and she had to travel out of the country. She texted us in the middle of the night and gave us the code to her house so we could go in there if we needed a basement. So, yeah, I mean, it's, that's, that's the kind of experience I've had with Airbnbs. It's all been positive. We had a family wedding where a number of family members all were able to stay together where otherwise we couldn't have done it and wouldn't have been able to afford it had we had to go to a hotel or motel or something like that. So I, I also, I love hotels as opposed to Airbnbs in some ways, too. So, you know, like I said, I can argue both. What I would say is we are... And, and I guess I'm putting this, trying to put this in mindset of what we have done as a city here over the last year. We have been doing some long-range plans. We, what do we want to do? Where do we want to go? What's the future? And I just, I feel like in some ways, maybe we're limiting ourselves by saying, well, it's all about the World Cup. What about the softball tournaments that come in all the time and other tournaments? The, you know, the frisbee golf and, and things like that. I mean, there's, there's a number of other things, another, number of other activities that I think, you know, we're, don't, we don't want to sell ourselves short and say they're only going to come to Belton because of the World Cup. There's a lot of other things that we have to offer. And as we're planning ahead and looking ahead, we want to make sure that we're preparing ourselves for that. And then finally, I guess, this comes from personal preference, but when I would go on either to look for a hotel or to look for an Airbnb, I look to see what's closest to the highway, especially if I'm coming for something. And we're shutting that hole 49 corridor, we're shutting D, and there's a number of soccer tournaments that take place over just across in Kansas that we could be a great place for them to come and, and, you know, teams travel and once they find out. So I, I just, again, I don't, I feel like it's a great start, and I'm happy that we're going ahead with a start and presenting that. I just don't want us to be too short-sighted or nearsighted on it that we don't, that we might miss out on some other opportunities that this could open up for us. And so...
I'm not sure if I agree, if I'm agreeing or not, but my opinion is, I don't, I use Airbnbs a lot, you know, probably 20 times a year, maybe more. I stay in residential areas all the time.
Get your microphone. Thank you.
It doesn't make, it doesn't make any sense to me why the city would say, we could do it right here, but we can't do it here. That doesn't make any sense to me. You know, I know that's kind of, if you call that a tourist area in the downtown, but I don't, I don't think Airbnb has a bad name. I'll bet you 99% of the time, nobody knows that I'm renting at short-term. I'll be in Nashville next week, you know, for a week. So as, as a longtime user of Airbnbs, the owners have to be careful, you know? We get a lot of warnings, you know, 10 o'clock warnings and stuff, but it doesn't make any sense to me to have the city do it in one little spot right in the middle and not okay it everywhere else. That just doesn't hold any water for me.
Kind of piggyback on that. Yeah, this is the downtown tourism area, but people that come to Belton and stay in residential areas, they're going to hit the grocery stores, they're going to hit Walmart, they're going to hit downtown, they're going to come want to see what we're about down here as well. They're not just going to come stay in that house and then disperse and never see the rest of the town. So I think we are selling ourselves short. I think we're leaving people out. And I know Facebook's the bane of everybody's existence, but I did post a question about this, and I got a wide range of answers. I got people saying no because you're going to suck up the housing market worse than it already is, and I get that. I got other people saying it would have been great when I had my family reunion here to have my family here if we had houses they could stay in because hotels are too expensive for everybody. So if we could have gotten a couple homes where they could have stayed, it would be easier. And as someone who travels with elderly parents, Airbnbs are just easier, short-term rentals are just easier with older folks than hotels because they're, they're much more comfortable, they feel more at home. So I think we are selling ourselves short. It, it feels like we're only being welcomed to a small percentage of people instead of showing what the beauty of the whole city is.
For the record, Walmart's in Raymore. Please don't go there.
My opinion is a no to all of it or yes to all of it, not yes to a little bitty spot in the middle of town.
I'm with you.
Okay. I wonder, and it just hit me as you were talking, Commissioner, I wonder if the term rental is where the problem is. Rental has a bad connotation. We think of rentals, we think of these landlords that are who knows where, that don't do anything to keep up their property, don't take care of their tenants. And, you know, I mean, we've got a lot of great landlords that are, that's not the case, but they're, that's, I think, what has given the term rental a bad name. And when we say short-term rentals, it's like, oh, great, here's more rental property coming in. And so, so what is your pleasure? We have no, we have the recommendation from staff. We do not have any motions on the table at this point. What's your pleasure?
I would make a motion to amend the recommendation to include the entire city.
So to do that, that would be on section, subsection A1, we would, or subsection A, we would be striking one and two and just leaving three. So essentially, we're eliminating, essentially, we just read that they are limited to single-family dwelling units, two-family dwelling units, upper-level dwelling units and mixed-use buildings in Old Town and approved accessory dwelling units. We still wouldn't allow them in multifamily units or any other non-residential building.
So we have a motion. Is there a second? Motion and a second. Everyone clear? Do we have any more discussion or comments? So everyone clear as to what the motion that is before us? It would include expanding the plan to the entire city limits of Belton at this point.
Can we have a second, another motion?
We have to vote on this motion.
Okay.
First.
Perfect.
But if this motion passes, then there wouldn't be a second motion.
Yeah, not a problem.
So I have a little discussion. I said I would be quiet, but I, I'm, I'm struggling making all this right now, but at the same time, I understand what you guys are saying. I still am in favor of the sample size of the small area to see if it works and then expanding it, but I completely understand where you guys are coming from. With that being said, I just don't want to open it up to the whole area and then we have an issue and then we can't, then we decide not to do it anymore, is my only hesitation with that.
I think it comes down to, do we start small with possibility of expanding or do we start big and then if we need to rein it in? Right now, our motion would be to expand it to the entire city. So let's go ahead and take the vote on that motion.
Commissioner McDonough?
Aye.
Commissioner Creighton?
Aye.
Commissioner Shutt?
Nay.
Marilarkey?
Yes.
Commissioner Walton?
Yeah.
Chairman McPherson?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Yes.
Okay, so at this point, what we have approved would be this plan, but expanding it, eliminating A and B and expanding it to the entire city of Belton.
Correct. So that, so that is the motion that was approved that made that amendment. So then there would just be a second vote unless there's any other discussions or amendments that are requested. There would just be a full vote on the amended tax amendment that would be forwarded to city council.
All right, is there a motion to then make final approval on this plan forwarding it to the city council as we have amended? What we amended was to eliminate that A and B.
Oh, yeah, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? All right, motion second. Any further discussion? So we're clear, what we voted for was the amendment to the plan as presented. What we're voting on now is for final approval to move to the City Council. We have the roll call, please.
I have a clarifying question. Do we have to vote on that twice?
Yes, because the, the first one was just to make the amendment.
First one was to amend.
Okay, I'm just making sure.
And so this is the text amendments as amended.
Motion, yeah, motion as amended.
Okay, so let me, okay, so you were the first.
I'm the second.
Yes.
Commissioner Walton?
Yes.
Chairman McPherson?
Aye.
Commissioner Crete?
Aye.
Commissioner McDonough?
Aye.
Commissioner Shutt?
Nay.
Marla Arkey?
Yes.
Thank you. We will move on then to final item under new business, presentation of PRO J 25-005, request from community development staff for approval of a final plat for Main Street Civic Center, a three-lot commercial subdivision on 1.36 plus or minus acres located at 506, 512, and 520 Main Street. And we'll ask Ms. Fernandez.
Thank you. This presentation isn't nearly as fun, so. An application was filed for a final plat for a 1.36 acre property for three commercial lots, including the dedication of easements to be known as the Main Street Civic Center. The subject property is a replat of a portion of two blocks in original Old Town, originally platted in 1871, very old, including 16 lots and the vacated right-of-way of Herschel Street that originally connected Main Street to Second Street. The purpose of this replat is to subdivide the property based on existing conditions, which includes three separate lots, Lot 1 being City Hall at 506, Lot 2 being the old City Hall at 512, and Lot 3 being the City Hall Annex that we're in now at 520. A 16-foot utility easement is also being dedicated on the rear of the block just adjacent to this building, along the alley, which will accommodate existing and future utilities to serve the block. The replat is part of an ongoing effort to ensure city-owned properties are in compliance with zoning and subdivision regulations. So with that, we recommend approval, and I'm here for any questions.
Hi. So, from what, from what it sounds like, this is just taking current land and just replotting it, basically. Is there, in the future, are there any plans, or going forward with this, would we like, just make one big civic center to like, house government offices and have like, event spaces or whatnot, or are we just, just for right now, we're just saying, we're just making this a little easier to move forward in the future?
Um, we're just trying to get our existing conditions replatted, what should have been done when these buildings were built, back in, you know, 2008 or whatever these were built originally. So we're just getting everything on their own lots, how they should be, and then ready for anything that might happen in the future.
If it's been on the books since 18, what, 75? I mean, why change it now? It's worked this long.
You'll be seeing a similar plat come forward for Wallace Park, the police, and the fire stations, because currently those are all on one large parcel. And so each city facility being on its own lot and having it platted separately is kind of what we're working on here.
So just to make sure I'm understanding, nothing is being decided about the future of like, the Carriage House, or the Theater. It's just saying, here's the subsection that this property, this building sits on. Okay.
Correct.
Is there any negatives to not doing this? Like, does it really change anything, or is it just like?
It's, it's just like, so for example, right now, because there's so many lots, if we, when we do a legal description for a property, it's multiple lots. So for example, we, like, right now, we lease out the old City Hall. And so the, the legal description on that for any kind of a lease agreement is this really long legal description that is not easy to identify. So nobody's going to know what lots 9 through 15 are.
Right.
But if you look at a, a clean plat that shows how things are actually developed, you'll be able to, to see clearly what property we're talking about.
Okay. Thank you.
Just basically something that slipped through the cracks for a number of years.
Just those little, you know, cross the Ts, dot the I things that, you know, you would want to make sure you clean up over the years and make sure those are clear. The next plat with Wallace Park was kind of brought up to allow the Parks Department to be able to dedicate their own specific park space. So this is just kind of with that whole thing.
Any other questions, comments? All right, is there a motion?
No, no public hearing.
No public hearing on this one.
I make a motion to approve the presentation of PRO J 25-005 as presented.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. And just as a clarification, the question was asked before the meeting by several, but the reason this is a final plat is because it's already platted, and so we did not have to do a first plat. So that's why we're going straight to a final plat on this one.
Yep, it is just a replat. Everything's already developed, the infrastructure is in for it. So there's no need for a preliminary plat, because we're not further subdividing anything.
Additional comments, questions? Seeing none, could we have the vote, or the roll call, please?
Commissioner Crete?
Aye.
Marla Arkey?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonough?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Yes.
Commissioner Walton?
Yes.
Commissioner Shutt?
Aye.
Chairman McPherson?
Aye.
Thank you. Director, do we have an update on the Unified Development Code?
Yeah, for Unified Development Code update, we just finished Phase 3 of 5 of the update, which was our community engagement sessions. So we had, we were at the Fall Festival, we had an open house, and then we had a workshop with Planning Commission and Council the week before last. And of course, everybody can follow along with our development code updates on the Community Development webpage. We have since updated and added all of the documents. We do have a survey that's online right now, which does close on Thursday. So if anybody hasn't taken that and is interested, it has a lot of information and questions on there, and images of kind of what you want to see Belton look like in the future. But these are all of the documents that the multi-studio team has completed over the last several months. The most recent thing that was added was the best practices, which essentially are a number of the boards and standards that were provided at the open house and at the workshop with Planning Commission. That lays out a, a bunch of different examples from around the country of kind of best practices for the different development types that we're trying to hit based on the conference of plan. So I encourage everybody to take a look at that, because that kind of provides some framework of what's, kind of a preview of what I think some of our development standards will turn into as they start drafting the UDC update. The next steps are, they will be starting to give us kind of a high-level overview of how they propose to lay out the table of contents for the UDC. They should have that to us sometime here in the next month or so. They're not going to do any kind of a formal meeting with that, because it's pretty simple, but that is something that we will share with the Planning Commission, just for review and any feedback that you may have on that. And then really, the next several months, they'll just be working on the drafts of the various chapters. We will likely bring that forward to Planning Commission and Council for input later in the winter, probably late February or March for that. And then some community open houses for those drafts, late winter, early spring, and then on through the adoption process, which is still slated for late next summer. But we are regularly keeping this up, this webpage updated, as we receive the additional documents from the consulting team, and that's where we'll also post anything for additional feedback. That's it.
All right. Questions about the development code, then? Are you going to be taking us through the quarterly development report?
Sure, unless Jenna would like to. So since Jenna did most of the design on this, I'll let her share.
That's why I wasn't sure which, which of you were going to do that.
If it's a document, it's usually me. So the quarterly development report has been a request from the City Council and probably some others for a while now. It's been on the back burner. But we've finally put one together, and this is honestly more of the easy-to-digest, quick snapshot, prettier to look at, permit report that we do every month. But obviously, we want to make it a little bit more interesting, so we're doing quarterly. So we're hoping to include in the future these general chapters that you see here, you know, giving everyone in the community kind of a quick, at-a-glance version. So we include some Belton demographics that we'll keep updated. This includes some info from Zillow and some other census data here, that we'll try to keep that updated as time goes by, just to give a quick snapshot. And then below that, you have the 2025 building permits issued by, I kind of color-coded these by quarter, but they're also in here by month. So you can kind of see the quick little categories here of how many permits are issued, and their values, and then the permit values. Upcoming development, we try to keep running tabs on what has been approved, or what's in the pipeline, and what are some things you're going to see happening in the future. So right now, in terms of residential, we've got Autumn Ridge and Creekstone at Autumn Ridge. Those are our main residential developments right now, that are in the pipeline and/or under construction currently. And then our non-residential items that are in the pipeline, some of these you'll see under construction, and other things you might not quite yet, but these have been approved. So these are things that you will see in the short-term future. So we included this section called Development Highlights, so we're going to kind of use this section to kind of move around the city and highlight different areas or districts in the city to kind of talk about the new businesses or the progress we're making. So in this case, we're focusing on North Scott. City staff believes we've made a lot of great progress on North Scott, and a lot of cool things are coming. So this just gives you a quick snapshot of all the different things that have happened, not necessarily within the last quarter, but just in recent year, probably. So we've got Lily's, which is a local business, expanding. We had the DMV relocation on North Scott. SNC Electric put in a lot of new investment into an existing building on North Scott. Jerry and Meadows was the first auto-oriented business that got to expand, so that's exciting. Cozy Pet Hotels existing on North Scott and is also expanding. And the previous Domino's Building or 155th and North Scott, that building has been purchased, and a new gas station will be built there. So just some cool things happening. And obviously, to Ryan's benefit, the new Marquee Parkway extension going to North Scott, very exciting. And so we also included currently under construction, so this is everything that you're seeing dirt move on currently, which is cool. So we've got a Valvoline on 163rd happening. We've got Olive Garden, which is very exciting. Everyone's very excited for that. We've got U-Haul, because what is happening behind Casey's, everyone always asks, so it's U-Haul. Fountain City Snacks is a local, also on North Scott, but a local food manufacturer of snack items. And so they're redoing a building on North Scott. Creekstone at Autumn Ridge, you haven't quite seen dirt move probably yet, but their site work permit has been approved. So that's the apartment project on South Mullen. And then the Contractor Garage is on Elmira. The first building there is almost done, so that's happening. And then the Hyperenergy Bar, they're building just went up, so that's cool, and that'll be finished up here shortly. And then some new businesses, we thought it'd be nice to highlight some of those big new businesses that are opening. The Peanut Handles and Chief Storage are all of our big grand openings that we've had currently. And then there's a link down here at the bottom to look at our project map, if anyone wants to look at anything else that's happening. Quick other little shout-outs to Parks and Rec, Public Works, and then our beautification progress. These are just some cool projects that have kind of been completed the last quarter. Parks and Rec completed their pickleball courts and added the new ADA fishing dock at Cleveland Lake, very cool. Public Works did Marquee Parkway Extension, and are doing all of our street resurfacing projects currently, which everyone enjoys, at least the end product, not necessarily during. And in terms of beautification and placemaking, some progress we're making there is the 163rd Street median landscaping. I believe the irrigation is in now, so now we can start doing all the fun stuff and adding the landscaping in. And then we've got our wayfinding signs installed, updated. And then at the end, we just included a quick resources page for all of the links to all of our things, our online portal, projects map, document center, and context stuff. So this is the general format that we're going to try to stick to over the next few quarters, and we can update as needed. But any feedback would be greatly appreciated.
It looks great. I do have one question, as you'd mentioned about Savers.
Yeah.
I saw that the Salvation Army has already moved out. Is Savers going to go ahead and do their full expansion now? I thought they'd originally just going to go into the one part and then later expand. Are they going to do all of that space now, or as they said?
We have not currently heard from Savers, so we're not quite sure they're phasing. It was also kind of a surprise to us to see Salvation Army already moved out. So we're just going to kind of see what happens there. But essentially, Savers is good to go and just needs to pull their permit, so, and get their tenant finish plans in.
Salvation Army moving over in the same place, or are they just gone?
So we did receive a license request for Salvation Army to move across the street in between the library and Harbor Freight. So that is in the works. And I will note that the way that the portal for agendas works is unfortunately, the hyperlinks don't work in the portal. But all of these are on our Community Development webpage under permits, inspections, and reports. And that's where you can find, at the bottom here, our monthly permit reports that Madison runs, and then the quarterly development reports. So that's where those are all located.
I just want to say, great job on this. It's nice to have a quick and easy document to see what's going on in town.
I second that. Thank you.
It'd be a lot easier when people stop me and say, hey, what's all that dirt that they're doing?
Yeah, right.
Well, have you gone to the website and looked at the development report? So, all right, Director, anything additional for your report?
Nothing additional, other than our upcoming meeting dates are Tuesday, October 21st, and Tuesday, November 4th. And if there are any cancellations of those, we will send those out in advance.
All right, very good. Any additional items?
We should do a jar.
Bag it.
Motion is set. Motion is second. All those in favor of adjournment?